Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion passes. Next up, we are going to look at the donations list. I'll read through them here as soon as I can get it zoomed in on my screen. We have $12,500 from Jim and Corley Kruger for the Kruger Scholarship. We have $300.67 from the American Lutheran Church for the Weekend Backpack Program. We have a $300 donation from the Wyndham Methodist Church for the Weekend Backpack Program. We have $454.95 from the McTeacher Night at the Wyndham McDonald's for the Imagination Library Program. We have $500 from Wyndham Area Girl Scout Service Unit for the Weekend Backpack Program. $55 from Bethany Lutheran Church for the Weekend Backpack Program. $76.40 from Poet Grain for the FFA Program. $362.85 from Girl Scouts of Minnesota and Wisconsin Troop 34164 River Valleys, Inc. for Morgan Johnson and Harriet Losi's Eagle Achievement Project. We have $1,000 from New Fashion Pork, Brad and Meg Frecking, Frecking Cattle, for Brooklyn Rolls Eagle Achievement Project. $200 from Wyndham Coffee LLC for the Cheerleading Program. $300 from Toro on behalf of Angie Clausen for the Weekend Backpack Program. $100 anonymous donation from the Weekend Backpack Program. And $100 from Jeff and Betty Friedin for the Weekend Backpack Program. May we have a motion?
Move approval? Second?
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
May I add a comment, please? Sure. Going out, one of the first things that I did when starting on the board was work with, at the time, Megan Knips, who was a school counselor to initiate the backpack program. And started working with the American Lutheran Church and the churches, and it is amazing to see all these years later how it is working. It's a great effort by so many people and a lot of churches that volunteer for that. However, right now, it is in a little bit of a financial, kind of a crunch right now, and it's great to see some of the donations that have been coming in on that. But if anyone wants to spread the word, they could sure use some extra funding at this time to keep it going.
Could we also get a list of what items, types of items they're looking for for this program as well? Or is it anything?
Are you talking about food items?
Yeah.
So they, they purchase the food items either through our food service department or Hy-Vee, so that it's the same for every backpack.
Got it. So more cash donation versus anything. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All the money goes for the purchase of the food, nothing else. It's all purch- any donations is used for buying food for the students.
Is there any way we could put something on the school Facebook page to say that we're in need of some cash donations for this, or is that not something we want to do?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Awesome. Thank you for pointing those things out. Any other comments about the donations? If not, all in favor of accepting their donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion passes. Next up, we have our Consent Agenda. As always, the items are listed in the Board Packet. Could we start with a motion, please? Motion and a second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Consent Agenda passes. Anyone for open forum, Mrs. Frank?
No one for open forum?
Thank you. Then we will move in to this public hearing for tax abatement for 40504, 440th Avenue, Wyndham, Minnesota, 56101. Now, do I ask for public comment on this, or do we just? Thank you. Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions or anything they'd like to say on behalf of this tax abatement? Mrs. Pullman, I know you're itching to say something. You can. Okay. If not, we will move to item eight, which is to approve the resolution 11252024A, approving tax abatement for certain property pursuant to the aforementioned tax abatement. May we please start with a motion?
I move approval?
Second?
Thank you. Have our motion and our second. Any questions, comments from the board on this? Okay. If not, this is a roll call vote. It is a resolution, so we will start from the other side this time. Brienne, are you in favor? Bruce?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joe? Myself, yes. Resolution passes. Next is the same for 1946 Bud Road here in Wyndham. Anyone here have any statements to make in regards to this tax abatement? If not, we'll move into the resolution, item number 10. May we please start with a motion? Thank you. And this is for resolution, I should have mentioned 11252024B for the tax, or for the statute, for the tax abatement on Bud Road. But any questions, comments? Okay. If not, we will take another roll call vote for this resolution. Get to the other side, Joe.
Amazing. Yes.
Oh, sorry, Barb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Brienne? Myself, yes. Resolution passes. Okay. Joe, would you shut off your mic there, sir? Got a little bit of feedback. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we get to move into our reports from our administrators. Mr. Barfneck, will you start with the elementary report, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. So, lots been happening at the elementary school. At the end of November, right before Thanksgiving break, we had our Eagle Pride Award, which was school-wide turkey bingo. We had a bunch of donations from the community of toys, books, some backpacks, some coolers, cards, games. A lot of our kids got to win some prizes. Just a fun way to recognize them for all their positive efforts. We had our parent teacher conferences, which showed about a 94% turnout to the conferences at the elementary, so we're pretty, pretty excited about that one. We had the ECFE Holiday Open House on December 3rd. 115 people came to that. There was a guest reader reading the story of the gingerbread man. It was me. I did voices and everything. I was pretty proud of myself. Things that are coming up in December, right before winter break, we are going to be taking our kids ice skating. Thanks to the Hockey Association for getting us some ice time. And we have volunteer groups from middle and high school that will help our kids tie skates and things like that, because all that takes a little bit of time when you take 450 kids ice skating. So, they won't all be skating at the same time. It's over two days. We have a family engagement night coming up tomorrow, thanks to the Wyndham Elementary PTO for donating some books to that. We'll be discussing how families can help their kids to become better readers, even starting as, you know, young as babies, a couple months old. How you can get them on the right track to be good readers later on. We'll have our winter concert on December 17th with grades K and 1 at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and 2, 3 at 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Well, of course, we have winter's, winter break coming up. We have a live letters training coming up in January. So this year, we have four units that we're trying to get through in letters, and so Unit 5, our January training, is the second half of the Unit 5. And then each of our staff development days after that, we'll cover one more of those units. We'll also have our Kiwanis Terrific Kid Program coming up in January. And then I mentioned in here, in other news, due to the Read Act, we have been looking at a new English Language Arts curriculum. And we are narrowing it down to two right now that meet the Read Act requirements, and they would give our teachers the tools that are aligned with the science of reading, and they fit well with all of this letters training that we're going through. We have been doing some site visits to see these curriculum in action. We've met with reps. Our teachers have piloted some lessons from each of them. So we're hoping to have this figured out for you in the next, probably the next month or so. So we'll give you a presentation when we're ready for that one. Any questions for the elementary?
Thank you. We'll move to the middle school report. Mr. Nielsen?
Hey, good evening and happy holidays, everybody. Just a few things to report on here. On this December 9th, our 8th graders, we are starting that registration process already. It's tough to believe, but on November 27th, they met with Leah Lovell and Kylie Nielsen to go over some of the classes that they could possibly be taking as 9th graders and getting them on the right track to filling that out and all of the information that is needed to have a successful freshman year in high school. It's just unbelievably crazy to be talking about that. I was sitting in a meeting this morning, and we were talking about preparing for, like, we're almost to winter break, as mentioned, January, and we were talking about some speakers in February. It's like, how can we be to this point already? It's absolutely incredible. Another thing I wanted to point it out was in November, there were 10 discipline or office referrals. 10. 10. That was it. For 5th through 8th grade. 6th grade had no part of that. So if anybody knows a 6th grader, congratulations to 6th grade, no part in that. Now, yes, there are still things going on, right? They might be taken care of in the classroom, this, that, okay? But as far as discipline referrals put in by staff members, a whopping 10 in November. That was pretty awesome. I just wanted to take a chance to celebrate that. Of course, December 20th is a 1235 dismissal. We will be doing a fun, some fun holiday things in the morning, just so everybody is aware of that at the middle school. And then when we come back from holiday break, we'll get after it January 2nd. The winter testing window is going to open up, so January 6th through the 24th, we will be looking at assessing our students with that star reading test in math and then also in reading, okay? So for both of those, the star reading and math tests will take place. Again, kind of another benchmark. I'm excited to see what kind of gains we've made thus far. It'll also help drive instruction as we break down some of that data, the number of other things. There's some other things I could talk about. I think I'll let Mr. Joyce do it. You know, we kind of have that spill over there a little bit. Do you have any questions for me and things that are going on at the middle school? By the way, Mr. Lakan, Mr. Stevens, we'll miss you a lot. Congratulations on, on just the ending of being on the school board. I don't want to say retirement. Well, maybe Mr. Lakan. I mean, we've been down that road already, so, but... It's a pleasure. Absolute pleasure working with you. Yep, for sure.
And a merry Wyndham Eagle Christmas to you as well.
Hey, thank you very much. Yeah, there's a lot of holiday spirit at school. I tell you what, here, the last week and coming up, so it's, it's been a blast. Kids are, kids are doing great, and there's plenty of holiday cheer being spread.
I have a question, please. I heard you mention about the counselors and the 8th graders heading into night, choosing some classes, and this would probably apply to Mr. Joyce as well.
Sure.
The switch from the Skyward to the new system, is that being apparent now? Is that showing efficacy of being very successful now? Some class planning, or is that not what you were speaking of, or is it working well for them?
I think it is working well for us as a district and everything else, and we're really going to find out now, and again, that's probably more so on Mr. Joyce's. Just as we start creating the classes and everything else and putting it into the system, how that's created, we'll really find out how that goes. And to be honest with you, we have a little bit more training coming up on that and even a little bit more guidance. But as far as Infinite Campus in general, amazing. I really, really like it, and I've heard good things from parents, too, which is important.
Any other questions for Mr. Nielsen? Okay. Otherwise, we're ready for the high school report. Mr. Joyce?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Good segue, because the first point I want to talk about was Infinite Campus. They lay out a process for us to watch videos and have live trainings and be in Q and As with other schools who are Infinite Campus schools to walk us right through the process, and we want to make sure we do it right this first time, so that we set the system up correctly, so that we are saving time on the registration process. That was really my big push and our student support team's push, which includes our counselor Jenny Squires, our social worker Kylie Nielsen, our middle school counselor Leah Lovell, and then, of course, Mr. Nielsen, the middle school. But scheduling was such a cumbersome process in Skyward, and we want to experience the benefit of Infinite Campus, and we feel it's going to be much better. We want to make sure we set it up correctly. But where we're at in the process right now is students have all been, and I say all, students going into 9th through 12th grade next year have all been presented information about the Registration Guide, and all families have been sent that Registration Guide, and I've talked to a number of parents who've had really good conversations with their kids about what classes to take. And of course, freshmen and sophomores, most of their schedule is pretty well prescribed for them on required courses. There's a couple hours to choose from. Juniors and seniors have even more than that. So really good discussions, and we wanted to make sure parents had that information along with their students, so they could look at the back of that sheet and say, well, what is this class, you know, and the Registration Guide kind of lays that out for them. So those forms were due back in Student Services last week. We've kind of got that data now, and our next step would be students going into Skyward and actually selecting courses. We're not there yet, and we aren't going to be there until January, when Infinite Campus walks us through that process. And we feel good about the timeline that we're in, because we don't feel like we're going to have to go back and reinvent the wheel after we run a live schedule. We feel like once we run it, it's going to be ready, and they know that we want to reserve the month of May to meet with students to get those schedules regular, finalized for next year, so that's, they're working with us on that schedule, and we feel really good about it. So as Mr. Nielsen stated, I've been super happy with Infinite Campus all year. Really, really a nice platform, so. Couple of items just I want to point out here this month. We've got our attendance pilot going on. I can't say enough about Craig Taylor and what he's been doing and what he's meant to our district. I know the data will be coming. We don't have final data yet. But I was able to meet with a panel of legislators last week. They have this working group on state attendance. Members of the House of Representatives, members of the Senate, along with the 10 districts that are part of this pilot. We all took part in a Zoom meeting last week and kind of talked about what we're doing. And I can tell you that in scale, schools about our size are all kind of doing the same thing, hiring an attendance coordinator. If you're bigger, maybe there's not enough money to hire that person to actually make a dent, and if you're smaller, you're still trying to figure out how this works and what, what you're going to spend the money on. Districts our size are in that sweet spot where it's like, we know what we need. We need a person to be on the ground, talking to kids every day, and trying to troubleshoot problems and, and figure out if they need a ride or what's going on. And Craig has been a great guy and a great asset for, for everything we've done so far. You can't just put a person in this position and say, go. You need a person that understands human beings and understands how to work with human beings, and Craig is just that, and he's been a major asset for what we've been able to do this year, and I can't say enough about that. And it was really, you know, interesting to hear from the other districts and knowing how well we're implementing. I've been, I was very happy in that, in that hearing. So we actually have a meeting this week. Chisholm is doing something very similar to what we're doing, and they sound like they've got a person that's really on top of their stuff as well. So we're going to do a Zoom meeting with Craig and myself, and then the Chisholm folks, and learn about what they're doing to see if Craig can get some ideas of even more innovative ways that he can do his job. So we're excited about that, and I'm excited about that partnership. So, it was the season concert. I just want to put a plug in for that for all of you. Hopefully, you can make it on Monday. Also, if you were at the Fall Band Showcase, that was unbelievable. If you weren't there, man, you missed out. It was, it was crazy good, okay? Our, our 6th through 12th grade band collaborated on one performance at the end, and I, I watched the performance when they first practiced to where they got, they only practiced together twice before they performed for the entire community. I don't know if people appreciate how big of a deal that is to only practice as a full group of over 200 people playing instruments, twice, okay? And, and they sounded so, so good, that Jim was just alive with music, and it will be on Monday as well. Our music department does a fantastic job. I've got some numbers here, and I just want to explain those for you. We fixate a lot on those kids that are struggling. That's the 11 up there, and that's the 20 up there. Those are kids, and that represents the amount of pages, when I pull a report from Infinite Campus, that's the amount of pages in the high school of students who are failing at least one class, okay? So it, it takes up 11 pages worth of information, okay? We, we work a lot on those kids, and what can we do to support them? What's, what, what systems do we need in place? What do we need to do? I got curious. Well, like, how many Bs and As are we giving? 136 pages. I had 136 pages worth of kids who are getting at least a B minus in any course for first quarter, okay? We're in the middle of second quarter right now, so those numbers are a little skewed. You know, right now, it's 65 pages worth of Bs and As and 20 pages worth of failures. We'll work those things out, and I think by the end, it will get back down much lower. But I was pretty darn excited to see 136 pages worth of Bs and As in the, in just the high school. I didn't run any other levels. So I think we should be proud of that. We know we've got 11 pages worth of kids that really need our help, and we're working on those kids. I can tell you that. But we got a lot of kids doing a great job. I was able to go to a principal's meeting up in Red Rock. I don't know if any of you have seen their new building. It's, it's really a nice building. It's going to serve the needs of their community for quite a while. But one of the places we toured was their locker rooms. This is actually the, the boys' locker room here. They're assigned a locker at the start of the year, and if they want to keep it all year, they want to, you have to be in three sports. Otherwise, your locker gets reassigned to somebody during the winter or whatever. At the top are kind of helmet and, and shoulder pad drying areas, so they can put their helmet and shoulder pads up there during football season. But I, I, I'm excited that our board is going to be having the discussion about locker room renovations, and I just, I think it's such a point of pride, because the work that puts in and the camaraderie that goes into that locker room, it spills into every other facility that you have, whether it be a wrestling room or gymnastics, or the gym, or the football field, or the baseball field, you name it. And it starts there. It starts with that camaraderie, and I think Red Rocks can be really happy with what they have there. And I'm really excited that our board gets to have the discussion about what we can do for our students to invest back in them in things like our locker room. So when they walk in our locker rooms, they feel pride about being a Wyndham Eagle, okay? There's so many places that they feel that already inherently, and right now, our locker rooms, I think, are falling short of that. And I think it's exciting that we do get to have that discussion coming up for our students. So I just, I, I want to include that, because I think it's an example of a modern locker room that can be done, and they've got team meeting rooms and things like that. But it's, you walk in there, like, you know what? Yeah, it must be really cool to be a Falcon. This is great, you know, and, and I'm like, I think Wyndham can do this, too. You know, and that's all I was thinking as I was, as I was walking through there. So finally, I just want to say thank you to everybody that works with our students, including all of you, and especially Mr. Stevens, Mr. Lakan. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys over the years. I've always appreciated the discussion and your care for our students, and I wish you guys the best in whatever continues down the road. And I look forward to working with the 2025, 26 board as well. So thanks to all of you for everything you do for our students, and best wishes here in the holiday season. Any questions?
Yes. Are those made out of wood with them?
Those are wooden, yes. Yep. Then they've got like a padded seat there that you can see.
Do they move around?
I don't believe so. They're, they're fixed there, but then the top is kind of where there's a locker piece, so if you had a, you know, anything that needed to be locked, could be in that, if any valuables, then otherwise, it's kind of an open area that the students can actually sit in for what they need. Yeah, it's kind of a seat. Yep. And there's kind of, I guess theirs is the size. I mean, it kind of goes around the exterior, and then the middle is kind of 10, you know. And in scale, you know, they're not, they're, they're not a very big school, so they can get their space very accommodating for what they have. But they also have a separate, like, team meeting room aside of that. That's just the locker area. Individual showers, of course. That's the, the modern, you know, set, but, you know, if any are interested, I'm sure they give you a tour up there. But it was, it was a nice setup. I think they did a good job. They're going to be happy with it. Students should have a lot of pride going through there. Having never been to the Taj Mahal, I've been to the Vatican, but not the Taj Mahal, and I can tell you, it's not the Vatican. But it is, you know, you drive by any of the facilities that are built nowadays, and it's, it's just different. It's different. I, I was in Mayo and Rochester today for an appointment for my, for my daughter, and we always get to drive by the Oatana High School. And it's right off the road there, and I just about stopped today to say, you know, can I get a tour, because I hear you guys got a pretty nice performing arts facility? But it's just everything, just like a home, you know? If you built it in 2000, you could build it now, and it looks more modern. Everything just looks more modern, you know? And, and just more accommodating to the needs. And when we look at the, the locker room we have, it looks, you know, dated. That's just what it does. So it's not very practical either, but definitely not a Taj Mahal. I wouldn't call it, call it that, but, yep. Yeah. No, I don't think it's that, but it is very practical and something that will be very, much a source of pride for, for students.
Any other questions for Mr. Joyce?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. You were talking about kids picking their classes. Like, I was helping Emma with hers, and I was going through the list. I'm like, I mean, I know there's a bunch of classes, but until you actually see a list of everything that's available to our kids, it's absolutely amazing. So our kids should be very lucky that they have these types of opportunities this, at this age, so.
That is for sure. It is a balancing act, creating a schedule, I tell you that, but it's, we do offer a lot for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. For the superintendent report, Mrs. Frank?
Good evening, board members. All right, we have December 1st enrollment data for you tonight on the screen behind me. We have 1,134 K-12 students as of December 1st. This is a decrease of three students from just one month ago. And as you know, enrollment comes and goes and fluctuates all the way throughout the year, so that is right there in your board packet for you to take a look at if you desire. The community survey wrapped up last Monday, December 2nd. School Perceptions is busy compiling the data, and will present this information to you on Thursday, December 12th at 6:30, right here in the council chambers. So we'll see you all right back here in just a few days. WOLD has been preparing the review and comment document that is due to MDE by Christmas Eve. They're putting together the generic information, and they'll add the final decisions that the board makes either on Thursday, December 12th, or if we need an additional meeting, we have December 17th, which is next Tuesday, set aside as well. So when those final decisions are made, the review and comment can be easily edited and, and ready for MDE if that's what the board chooses. The Policy Committee met on December 6th at 2 o'clock. The main purpose for this meeting was to write a school board handbook. Now, we've never had a school board handbook before, but Bruce and Bree, do you agree that it's going to be a nice resource for school board members to have? There are many links within this handbook, so it's kind of like a one-stop shop. So if you're looking for a policy on, you know, employment practices, or, you know, the, the middle school handbook, or the elementary handbook, or those kinds of things, all of those links are going to be right there. So it's like a one-stop shop for board members, and it'll be really nice for our newest board members to be able to look through that and, and have that guide. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that the chamber is putting on a parade of lights on December 19th. And of course, we, you know, need to be present for that, so I'll be decorating the suburban and driving it through the parade, and all of you are welcome to join me. We can fit nine people, so we'll see you there. And then lastly, I just want to say to Dustin Stevens and Joe Lakan, we will be doing a formal presentation for you at the special meeting on Thursday, and we have a gift for you. So if you'd like your family to come, that would be a good, good time.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any questions? Okay. Otherwise, any board updates, any subcommittee things that have been going on that we haven't discussed? Okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
You want to turn your?
What is going to be kind of an island all by itself as far as school choice? All the states around us are getting into school choice, and consequently, some are leaving, leaving the Minnesota. And home, when the kids are educated at home, that could be in the rise, too. These are things that are happening now. All the states around us are going to be giving money to school choice parents. Something very new that just came out. Alpha News. Okay, so something to think about, because it could affect the enrollment. Homeschool especially, maybe. But hopefully, it won't be too much of a deal for us in Wyndham, maybe. Something to think about.
Thank you, Joe. Any other board items? Okay. Whoops. Then we are going to move on to, that was item six, that will be item 16, to review the board committee assignments. There is an attachment that show the assignments for this year, and please take a look. Look at each of the committees, look what your assignments are, consider what your assignments were. Look in particular at the positions that Dustin and Joe have been holding. And we really want to see if there's an area where each of us are interested, where we'd like to shift, or something you'd like to step into. And board, please don't be bashful to say you want to serve in a, a capacity or a seat or in a committee. It's good. So if there's anything you're at least interested in, definitely make a note. And then, do we give them to Bruce? Do we send her?
It'll, it'll come. It'll come to me, but if you, it'd probably be easier to send it to Teresa, and then it'll come to me.
Okay, perfect. Maybe even just send it to Bruce and Teresa, one email? Cool. And then in a next board meeting, we will get those compiled, and we'll take a vote on those. But please, just make sure if there's anything that you're interested in, put your hat in the ring if we all want to be. hat in the ring. If we all want to be on the same committee, great. Well, we'll figure it out. That's a wonderful problem to have. And I think after this year, we all kind of get a, a good idea of what a balanced load is for some of these committees. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to anyone you see on any of the committees, and just ask what that entails. And new board members, you will definitely be added into the mix, and you'll be on sub, subcommittees as well. So we'll balance it out to make sure that we have seniority and can be a learning process there. So just please take some time and get back to Teresa and Bruce on your decisions there. Any questions or comments on that? Or additional information? Okay. Then we will move on to item number 17, which is to approve our fundraising requests. Mrs. Frank?
We just had one fundraising request come in. It's at the bottom there, and I believe it's for band, actually, for selling, is it fudge? Is that what this says? Yes, okay. It's a little small. I can't quite read. So anyway, that's the newest addition to this, and we're just looking for improvement there.
Okay, if we could start with a motion, please?
I move approval.
Excellent. Any questions or comments?
You know what? You know that I would move the motion forward for fudge.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. Item number 18 is to improve, approve the MSA and WESP seniority list for the school year. Mrs. Frank?
All right. In your packet, you will find the seniority lists for the Paris Custodians, Food Service, and Secretarial Group. These people have reviewed the seniority list, and it is ready for your approval.
May we start with a motion, please? Any questions on any of these lists? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Seniority lists pass. Okay, next up is a proposal for marching band. Mrs. Pullman?
Hello. Five years later, I'm back. As you know, we tried starting this right away, and then lots of things happened. And I've been just kind of waiting for the right opportunity to reintroduce this. So at this point, as Mr. Joyce mentioned earlier, our band program is thriving right now, and it is, it is time to start this marching band. I have put together some specs for you on the sheet. We'll start probably just with me as the actual band director, just, just myself. And then I'll have some assistance for flag twirling, and potentially the rifles. We're just gonna see where the student interest is at, because it really just depends on how many students want to do this. I did purposely pick a time where most seasons have wrapped up for sports. So that way, if a student's going to the state tournament, or even late in the playoffs, yes, absolutely, you can do that. Those are gonna be our older students, so I will be working with them anyways before school is out. And then, the younger students will very much be done with sports at that point. So we would start after Labor Day. We would have rehearsals almost daily until Riverfest. And then we'll just have a few more between Riverfest and Powwow. And then that will be our season, at least to begin, you know? And that's, I think, a really solid starting point. It gets the students close to home, where their families and friends will be able to watch. And it's, if we can do this, I think it'll be absolutely wonderful. The community has been asking for it. I have students that have been asking for it. We just really need it to be official. So, do you have any questions for me?
Is there a number that you're looking for to have to, as far as to march?
So I'm opening it to students who are finishing 7th grade through, you know, graduating. So between that, that would be about, oh, I got my head straight now, 200 kids, 200 plus. So I think we should be able to get about 60. Now, that might actually be way more than that, because we have truly tremendous students right now, and they are so passionate about what they do. And a lot of that is for Ms. Swanson with the middle school. She does an excellent job of getting them just really, really excited for music. And the high school, we've been really working hard on just making them proud of what they do. Mrs. Axford's been helping with lessons too, and the, the rigor is there. Like, the students, I'm not gonna do any spoiler alerts, but just wait until the next concert, okay? So these students are working really hard. And marching band is technical. It's difficult, but it's also supposed to be really fun, right? That brings a whole new light to even pep band, right? Because now you're presenting down the street. And so I think we'll have plenty of buy-in, and my goal is at least 60 out of those, about 200 students.
How about uniforms?
So what we talked about, Mrs. Frank and I sat down, we're thinking, we'll start with just t-shirts, but they will be school t-shirts. The school will own them, and then students will check them out. And when, after our two performances, they'll turn them back in. That way, it's not so much of a cost problem for the students to join. And there's a pretty short timeline, so we would have to, you know, there wouldn't be time for the students to order their own. So we'll just have our set uniforms, and they'll use them, bring them back, and then we can use them again next year.
These are the old ones, right, you're talking about?
No, the old ones, most of them are decayed. They're gone. So we would be purchasing new t-shirts.
What do you mean, t-shirts? Don't they have a regular uniform?
So, no, not yet. Those are very, very expensive. The t-shirt is a good starting point, especially with not knowing how many students right now are gonna actually want to participate. And if we, you know, if it goes successfully this year, then next year we might have twice as many students again, right? So this is a good starting area so that we can work in that growth. And then when we're like, solid, like, okay, it's consistent, we can look into uniforms.
Yeah, speaking of that, it looks like you have $3,362 to get this program launched. Awesome. That's like, low risk. Like, we can make sure, like, that, because if we did go for uniforms and did all that right away, that'd be pretty monstrous risk. So this looks like a really good, a cost entry point for us to, to give it one year, and then see how much we want it to grow in different ways, maybe next year, the subsequent year. And it's a lot of work for you. That's the biggest thing, is your willingness to do this. So thank you.
Yes. Oh, I, I have been itching to do marching. You know, I did it all through college. I was the drum major, and I'm just very excited. I've been, like I said, waiting for the right moment to do this again, because I want it to be successful. You know, if I had tried doing this right after COVID, who knows what would have happened. But now, we're good to go.
I'll put a bug in here.
You're good.
The Remick Foundation, you should apply that, because their main goal is the visual arts and the arts in general.
So I have thought about that. And I haven't, I haven't talked to Mrs. Frank about this yet, but as far as equipment goes, that is a thought from mine, yes.
They gave over $100,000, I think, this year to the district.
I know they're appreciative, because I've talked to many people around the school district, and they've, they've definitely mentioned how much they appreciate having Remick available.
I can vouch for street marching. There's nothing boring about it. As you know, you know, just learning how to walk in a straight line with diagonals and all that, and watching that, but then just playing as you're walking, and doing the turns and everything that you do with a practice or anything. Back in the good old days, we did six street marching places in the summer, three in the fall. And plus, the football games and everything. It was, you know, you just, anytime you could play the instrument and be together with the gang, it's fun.
It's a team, and it's, it's a lot, a lot of fun. And it's a huge team, right? How many other sports have 60 people all at the same time?
And the interaction between the grade levels.
Yes. And I'm very much looking forward to that, you know, and having the younger students. And that's in my page here too, is the older kids are going to be role models for the younger kids, you know? And that gives our older kids opportunities to lead too, when in their comfort zone, right? They know how to do band. So now they can just kind of help out the younger kids. And it's only gonna help our program get that, that much better.
And, and also, being in this district for quite a few years, that parades, people really remark about how they're dressed. It really shows a reflection on the district. And many of my beautiful uniforms.
And that's our goal.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the proposal for the marching band this summer.
So, so, second.
Okay. We have our motion in a second. Any further questions for Mrs. Pullman? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. We get to have a marching band.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hopefully, it happens this year.
Oh, it will happen this year. We're starting tomorrow. Okay.
No interruptions.
Awesome. That's exciting. Okay, item number 20. Mrs. Frank is gonna bring us some information from FEMA for a storm shelter grant.
It's a great day, right? We just approved marching band, and now we have Jordan Bus with us today. So Jordan is a grant writer, and he is very familiar with the FEMA BRIC grant. So if we were to add on to our building, we would need to follow a new code. This code has been put into place since we built the elementary school. It is code ICC 500. It's a Minnesota building code, and it would require us to put a tornado shelter on. So if we were to add on a fine arts center to the middle high school, we would have to make it a storm shelter. Those numbers, that is, that is not a surprise, I want to tell you, first of all. It's not a surprise. It's already built into the numbers for the fine arts center. But what we have discovered is that FEMA has a grant to help districts with part of the cost for the tornado shelters. So we, I happened to be able to connect with Jordan. We had a short meeting the other day, and I was very, very impressed with the information that he was able to give Chad and I. And so I thought it would be perfect for him to just join us tonight, give you some information about the grant as another option for a funding source for this project, okay? All right. I introduce to you Jordan Bus.
Thank you. Thank you. I am going to share my screen. Okay, can you see that okay? All right. Well, thank you for the introduction. Yes, as Frank said, my name is Jordan Bus. I, just a little bit about myself, so you kind of know who I am, and I guess why I'm talking to you tonight. I'm from Spencer, Wisconsin, the center of the state. I've been a school board member there since 2018. And in that capacity, I wrote our district's FEMA grant application for 3.44 million dollars to build a multipurpose tornado safe room attached to our 4K-12 school. Inside of our safe room, we have our primary competition court, along with a community fitness center, locker rooms, as well as a wrestling multipurpose room. And then, in a connected building, we also have a lobby area with concessions and some music classrooms. In going through that process of writing that grant as a school board member, I realized there were no good resources for communities to pursue these funds. So I formed my own company to help communities such as yourself pursue these, these funding opportunities. Since 2018, I've worked with a number of different school districts to obtain funding ranging from $2 million up to 8.3 million. So in 2019, I worked with three school districts, Abbotsford, Wisconsin, Luck, Wisconsin, and Owen Withy. They each received $2 million. And these facilities have been anything from, you know, elementary wings onto their 4K-12 school with a little gymnasium, to an actual, you know, full-size gymnasium, similar dispensers, multipurpose cafeterias, as well as actual field houses. So the, the range of all of these different, you know, selected applications are around 47 million dollars that have been selected and are working their way through various, you know, points in the award process for, you know, each of these communities. You all seem familiar, at least with the, with the grant program, but it is the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, or BRIC, B-R-I-C for short. It's an annual grant program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and its objective is to reduce the risk to individuals and their property from natural disasters, and by doing so, reducing their reliance on federal funding from those future disasters. So it's seen as a way of trying to incentivize communities to invest in mitigation planning and preparedness in order to become more resilient and break this cycle of sustaining damage from a disaster, spending both local and federal funds to reconstruct the same exact thing, to have a repeat natural disaster, start the process all over again. It is a highly competitive national grant program. And just to kind of give you a historical, you know, perspective of how much funding is available, in 2020, there was $500 million available. That doubled in 2021 to 1 billion, doubled again in 2022 to 2 billion, and then it went back down to 1 billion last year, 2023. The FEMA Notice of Funding Opportunity that announces how much funding is available is expected any time. It is a little bit delayed this year. Typically, we know how much funding is available this year, but that should be released shortly. So in a typical year for an application process, there's a window to apply, and it usually begins the beginning of October, and it runs through the third week of January. So there's usually about four months to apply. That window has not opened yet this year because of that Notice of Funding Opportunity not being released, and it is being delayed. I've heard that it is delayed because of the, the hurricanes. So they delayed it. So in the states that were impacted by the hurricanes, we're not at a disadvantage, you know, when preparing applications, so that it was more of a level playing field, you know, allowing them to get on their feet in, in preparing, you know, these applications. So typically, the final draft is due in January to the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management. That, these deadlines are, you know, kind of fluid at this point, because once the Notice of Funding Opportunity comes out, that's what sets the deadline. But on a typical year after an application is submitted in January, FEMA conducts a number of technical criteria reviews and qualitative reviews by a number of different panels, and they announce their selections in summer of 2025. If you are selected at that time, that essentially means that you would receive the grant. However, you have to go through a further review process before the grant is actually awarded. In that further review process, FEMA conducts an environmental and historic preservation review, where they make sure there are no adverse impacts to the environment or any historical sites. And they also have a team of reviewers at the FEMA Regional Office in Chicago that go through the application and the proposed project with a fine art tooth comb to make sure that all program requirements are being met, and that they don't have any questions or need any clarification on things. After those reviews are completed, the grant can then be awarded, and then construction can start. Prior to that grant being awarded, construction cannot begin. They say that the review process can be as quick as six months. So around December of 2025 is like the quickest that that review process can be completed and a grant be awarded. However, typically, they do work slower than that. So I'd expect May of 2026 is a more realistic timeline for a selected application to be awarded. The period of performance, or the time you have to complete the grant, complete the project, excuse me, is 36 months from selection, at least. It's usually sometime between the selection and the grant award. So you would have until at least summer of 2028 to complete the project. A few of the grant program requirements. So in the development of an application, you have to conduct a benefit costs analysis, where we calculate a benefit cost ratio. And that is essentially a calculation that weighs the benefits versus the costs in FEMA's eyes. So that has to be greater than one, because FEMA wants to only fund, you know, cost beneficial projects that they see as cost beneficial. The way that the funding actually works is it is a cost share or a cost match. So what we do is we identify the number of occupants, number one, that we're looking to provide near absolute life safety in the event of tornado. And so from that number of people, we need a certain square footage to provide enough space for that, you know, those occupants. And from there, we put together preliminary floor plan and obtain a budget estimate to determine how much it would cost to build such a facility. From that budget estimate, we break the expenses into two pools of money, eligible expenses and ineligible expenses. So FEMA will only pay for costs that are necessary for the facility to provide near absolute life safety in the event of a tornado. So things that are not eligible... So things that are not eligible are more on the aesthetic side, um, so flooring, paint, acoustical ceiling tiles, um, things like that are not eligible and FEMA would not fund. The remaining eligible expenses, FEMA would pay for seventy-five percent of those. The remaining twenty-five percent would come from some local funding source. That is the standard cost share. For economically disadvantaged rural communities, um, that cost share jumps up to ninety percent. However, the economically disadvantaged rural community, um, in order to qualify for an E D R C, um, you have to have a population of three thousand or less, um, and not be a part of a greater metropolitan area. And your per capita income has to be, uh, lower, eighty percent or lower than the national average. So preliminarily, you know, you would not apply, would not qualify for the E D R C. However, um, you still could get the standard cost share. Um, so that is key in all, obviously calculating the grant amount, but also, um, in the first, um, evaluation criteria. It's called the technical evaluation criteria. Um, so this changes a little bit every year, um, but it's usually pretty much the same. They usually just tweak the points, um, a little bit. But so in each of these, uh, five categories, um, you either get the points or you don't. Um, so it's essentially checking the box or not. And the biggest points here are this disadvantaged community, um, which if you are an E D R C, the economically disadvantaged rural community, uh, you would receive forty points. Um, so this is really key because, um, in any of the applications that I've worked on, that is the primary indicator of, you know, your chances of being selected. So in the last two years, um, we've had eight E D R C applications, um, that I've worked with. Seven of those were selected. Um, so we have a very good track record, uh, if you do qualify for E D R C, which you do not. However, um, there is a secondary, you know, option with thirty points and that is based on being identified as a disadvantaged community under either the justice forty or the climate and economic justice screening tool. So that screening tool is per census tract. Um, and so there is a census tract, um, that is a part of the city, um, that is identified as disadvantaged. So you would receive those thirty points. While we, this, this kind of option has only been around, um, for this past year. So we don't have a ton of data on this. However, if you would have applied last year, um, and compared it to the two applications that were selected in Wisconsin that I worked on, because you are in the state of Minnesota and not in the state of Wisconsin, you would have received twenty points in this category, which we would have only, uh, been awarded five points in Wisconsin applications. So in that case, you would have scored higher, um, than the two applications that were selected in Wisconsin, um, that I worked with. So based on that, I do think you have a good chance at being selected, um, moving forward. It's, it's a little confusing, but, um, essentially you would, you would have scored higher last year in this technical evaluation criteria, um, than the two that were selected, um, that I worked with. So a little bit more about kind of the grant program eligibility. So state, territorial, tribal, or local governments are entities that can apply. And so either a public school district or a local municipality, um, would be eligible to apply. However, whatever entity is, um, you know, the technical sub-applicant, they have to have participated in and adopted a local hazard mitigation plan that has been approved by FEMA. Historically, at least in, in Wisconsin at least, and I believe in Minnesota, um, school districts have not been really, um, encouraged to participate in these plans in the past, um, and that is at the county level. Um, so every county has their own local hazard mitigation plan, um, and it is valid for five years before it has to be updated. Um, I do not recall off the top of my head, um, when the plan is up, is, is, um, is going to expire, um, for Cottonwood County. Um, but that is something that we are working through and we could utilize the local municipality as a pass-through entity, allowing the school district to apply directly. Um, so how that works is the local municipality would be the technical sub-applicant on behalf of the school district. So that would allow us, um, to qualify for these, uh, this requirement for the hazard mitigation plan because the municipality has adopted that plan. Um, we have utilized this, um, a number of times, actually probably about eighty percent of the successful applications that we've, um, we've had have utilized this pass-through entity with local municipality. So it's very easy and there are really no downsides to approaching an application that way. Um, we'd also have to have an account, um, that is, uh, up to date with the system for award management, CM.gov, um, which is free and, and pretty easy, um, but pretty much everyone has an updated account, um, with all of the different federal funding requirements. The last, um, kind of eligibility, um, indicators is the FEMA wind zone region. Um, so you are in the two hundred fifty mile per hour wind zone, which is the highest. Um, and based on that, that has a little bit of an impact on the benefit cost ratio calculation, um, and actually puts it a little bit higher, um, which is good. Um, floodplain, that is one of the, uh, another big one. Um, so the safe room cannot be located within a floodplain, um, and it's a certain floodplain. I believe it is the hundred-year flood. Um, so while based on, you know, your, um, campus location in the orange, that is the five hundred, um, year floodplain. Um, so I believe that you would be just fine, but that would, we would need to, you know, double check that and have that, you know, be analyzed a little bit, uh, closer just to make sure we are meeting all requirements with the safe room site, um, you know, if we were to pursue an application. Um, also, any eligible occupants cannot cross a floodplain to reach the safe room. Um, so that does have an impact on the number of people that we'd be able to justify to FEMA as being eligible, uh, in an application. The, the grant program, the BRIC program is very flexible. Um, so in order to apply, whichever entity is the technical sub-applicant, uh, either the school district or the city, uh, would have to simply pass a resolution giving a representative signature authority to submit a grant application on behalf of the entity. That being said, there is no fiscal responsibility until work would begin, um, until construction would begin. Um, so there's no earmarking of funds. There's no down payment, nothing of the sort to pursue this funding opportunity. Uh, we would just need a, a cost, a signed cost share agreement that just states that you understand in order to receive the federal cost share, you have to put forth the local cost share matching funds. Um, similarly, we would need a signed maintenance agreement that just states, you know, the facility would be the school district's. Therefore, any ongoing maintenance throughout the life of, of the facility would have to be the school district's responsibility. Um, upon grant closeout, we would need an operations and maintenance plan and agreement, um, that just states how you would operate, um, the facility relative to its safe room functionality. That being said, it is a tremendously flexible program and that the program is completely voluntary. So say you were to prove, to apply this year, um, you're selected in summer of twenty twenty-five. You go through the further review process and the grant is awarded and you sign the state local agreement accepting the grant, uh, the grant award. And then something changes in your community where it's no longer feasible to follow through on the project, um, you know, for your school district. You can decline the funds at any time with no penalties or repercussions. So even at that point, you'd be able to, to decline the funds and essentially just decline the grant. Um, so it's completely voluntary and there was really no risk where it doesn't force you to follow through on the project if it is no longer feasible. Um, so what does that exactly mean, you know, for your school district? Um, so what I did is I put together a preliminary estimate based on, um, our arbitrary point, um, you know, at least for this preliminary estimate, um, you know, on your campus. Um, so FEMA allows or requires any eligible occupants in the grant application, um, that they have to be able to reach the safe room within five minutes' notice. Based on that, they allow up to a half-mile driving distance from the safe room or a quarter-mile walking distance. Um, so based on that, um, this is a, a rough, um, preliminary protection zone, um, from a hypothetical safe room, uh, location. Within that protection zone, there are approximately, um, an estimated thirty-six apartments and ninety-three single-family homes, um, so around three hundred people. Um, so that is the first subpopulation that we identify, um, when developing an application. The second is any eligible businesses, um, within that area. So their employees and their visitors. Um, for this, you know, exercise, I put that at zero. Uh, if we were to pursue an application, uh, we would, you know, study that further to ensure, um, that we leave no stone unturned, uh, relative to the number of occupants that we're able to justify. And obviously the last one is your students and your staff. So when we combine all of those, um, we get our total safe room population. If you do notice, um, I did not use your current enrollment. Um, so what we do is we don't use current enrollment. What we like to do is we, uh, conduct an enrollment capacity study, uh, where we determine the number of classrooms in your, in your current facilities, how many students can be enrolled in each classroom and then how many, you know, your building's capacity for, you know, the number of students to be enrolled. Uh, this does two things. The first one is it allows, um, it, it ensures that if you're, um, if your enrollment increases in the next five to ten years, you know, you're, you won't run out of room in your safe room. And the second, it allows us to balloon that occupancy a little bit, requiring more square footage and a potentially larger grant, um, funding opportunity for, for the district. So based on this preliminary estimate, you'd be eligible for around a one thousand five hundred and seventy-two-person safe room. Based on that, you would need around a twelve thousand five hundred square feet of main use area. Um, this main use area can be utilized for whatever you want on a daily basis. It could be a performing arts center, gymnasium, classroom space, whatever you want to achieve facility-wise as a district. Um, you can utilize that, um, on a daily basis as long as within five minutes' notice, um, it's able to be utilized as the safe room. Um, we would also need to, uh, provide some storage, uh, first aid and other supplies, some restrooms, some hallway, uh, for bringing in new guests and then, and then a mechanical room for any critical systems. Uh, so for this hypothetical project, you'd need around thirteen thousand square feet, um, you know, to provide the necessary functions and space for, uh, the safe room. If this number is, um, too large, um, of an area relative to what you want to achieve facility-wise as a district, we would simply lower the safe room population we identify in the application, therefore requiring less square footage and tailor the application to what you want to achieve facility-wise as a district. Um, so we tailor that application to what you want to achieve. Similarly, if this is too small of an area, um, you can always build the facility larger. It's just anything above and beyond the eligible square footage would be one hundred percent on the school district. So based on this hypothetical project, um, I did a backwards grant, you know, grant amount calculation based off of two other, um, previous, um, you know, projects, um, that I've worked on. And based on a seventy-five percent cost share, you'd be eligible for around a five point nine million dollar grant application with about two million dollars in local cost share and about one point two million dollars in, in ineligible expenses. Please keep in mind, this is by no means a construction estimate of, um, of any kind, really. It's just a, to kind of give you an idea of what type of, um, scale of a grant application you'd be looking at. Obviously, if you build a gymnasium, the ineligible cost would be different than if you built a daycare. Um, so this is just kind of giving you an idea of what you're looking at cost-wise, um, for, you know, a grant application. So on this hypothetical nine million dollar project, um, FEMA would pay for roughly sixty-five percent of the overall project, um, if you were to be selected. I did run a benefit cost of, uh, ratio calculation and that came in at two point four seven, which is very good. Um, it actually shows that we have a little bit of room where if this, for the same number of occupants, the expenses can go up uh, quite a bit and the project would still be cost beneficial. Um, so that is, that's good, um, for the development of the grant application if we were to pursue one. Um, the last thing I like to leave is, you know, what are your next steps? You know, obviously determine your level of interest. You are, you know, it sounds like exploring your facility goals and needs, but make sure that you determine the ideal timeline of when you want to achieve those goals and make sure that that timeline coincides with the, you know, requirements of the grant relative to, you know, a, a, uh, uh, an application being selected and then the award process being, you cannot start construction until, uh, roughly May of twenty twenty-six if you were to be awarded. If you are interested in, in pursuing an application, we could explore the possibility of entering into a partnership to begin the research phase, determining the scope of the project and begin writing an application. Any questions?
I feel very informed, Jordan. I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so a billion dollars or it was two billion last year. It sounds like the projects you worked on were maybe three million-ish average. So it seems like maybe like five hundred schools get this year-ish. Do you know how many schools apply or what percent of students?
Yeah. Um, so that, that's a hard question because, so in the BRIC program, it is not only tornado safe rooms. That's not the only project, um, you know, the hazard mitigation, um, activity that is eligible. A lot of applications that are selected are more into the flood mitigation risk. Uh, there's been tsunami, um, uh, mitigation. Um, so those, there's all kinds, kinds of different mitigation efforts that are funded through this program. It's not just for safe rooms.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And, uh, with the districts you work with, what like success rate have you seen from the grants that you submit?
Yeah, uh, so that is a very hard, um, you know, question to answer without, if you think this number sounds great, take it with a grain of salt. If you think it sounds bad, take it with a grain of salt as well. If you went straight percentage with all the school districts that I've worked with, um, we're at about a forty-seven percent success rate. However, that doesn't tell the whole story. Um, some, um, only applied one year, didn't get it and then stopped applying. Um, they could have, you know, applied again and in the following year, they probably would have gotten selected just knowing, you know, in hindsight. Um, similarly, there are some that have applied every year that they're, they're never going to have a chance in, in my opinion just because of, um, the way that they score in that technical evaluation criteria. Um, if you were to look at, you know, essentially economically disadvantaged rural communities over the last two years, uh, we've been seven out of eight. Granted, you are not an E D R C, however, you score higher than the E D R Cs that were selected last year. Um, so kind of a long-winded answer, uh, to your question, but a straight percentage doesn't really answer, you know, what the chances are, uh, because of each community is kind of a little bit different.
That's very helpful. Thank you. That answers really well what I was getting at. Um, and then second, so when they come on our site and, uh, let's say we're selected and they're going to come start to review, how, how onerous is, are those audits? Is it going to take us like a lot of staff and a lot of hours and walking around with FEMA for weeks on end?
No, um, I have not been aware of FEMA ever stepping foot, um, on any of the sites. Um, unless they do it at night that nobody knows, but, um, I am not aware of them ever coming on site other than, um, we have had a FEMA representative come for a site. Um, they call it an inspection. Um, but in reality, like the state, so the state government is actually the administrator of the grant. Um, FEMA obligates the award to the state and then they administer it. Um, so they have come for a site inspection where they, um, take a lot of pictures, um, and it's more so of a, um, wow, this is so awesome type of, of a site visit. Um, relative to the review, uh, the kind of workload on any, you know, um, district staff would be very, very minimal. Um, that is my job to walk you through that process. I provide you with all of the answers. I provide, compile all of the documentation and provide it to, uh, the community to essentially sign and then we submit it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jordan?
I just have one thing to add. So the county's mitigation plan expires April of twenty twenty-five. And Jordan, we talked about this a little bit with Kristen and we landed on, I'm just reading an email from you that said, based on the, based on the information, um, it sounds like we could pursue, um, an application having the school district adopt the county's plan. Um, so anyway, and I have talked to the county and, um, Paul said that they are in, they will be in the process of updating it since it expires in April of twenty-five. Um, but we also talked to the lady at the state for FEMA and she said, just adopt that, adopt the county's current plan and when they renew it, adopt the next plan. So, um, we could have the city be the pass-through for the funding or, um, I believe we could just do it ourselves. Is that correct, Jordan?
Excuse me, yes. Um, so, yes, i- i- it's really up to kind of how the state and the county want to handle it and it sounds like based off of that email, um, that is their preferred method. Um, in Wisconsin, um, Wisconsin Emergency Management, the state government in Wisconsin's emergency management agency, they rather run it through the local municipality as opposed to Minnesota, sounds like they'd rather just amend the plan, which is cleaner. Um, it's just a different kind of approach. Um, so that would be, um, a possibility, um, from the sounds of, of that correspondence. Um, one thing to note, um, relative to this. So in order to be an eligible applicant, um, you have to have that hazard mitigation plan adopted, um, and up to date at the time of the, um, of the application and when it is awarded. However, FEMA hasn't really answered the question of, okay, well, this, this award process takes over. This award process takes over roughly a year, if you if you really, you know, think about it where you're developing an application now. You submit it and you're not gonna be awarded until May of twenty twenty-six. So with the school district, oh, um, you know, if you were to. Um, adopt the current plan and then update the next plan, you know, you should have those plans in place at those times. Um, but it is something that is um. You know, I guess not unknown, but because of the delay in the notice of funding opportunity, that that application deadline is not known at this time. However, like um, Mrs. Frank said, the. The state is advising that to move forward with the grant, you know, if you are awarded, um, and and we, you know, cross all of those bridges. You know, at those times.
And just to give you a point of reference board, um, I'm looking at Mamma's spreadsheet when they were um. Preparing for the Performing Arts Center and the auditorium and stage, which would be the part of the Performing Arts Center that would be reinforced as a tornado shelter. That is listed at eleven thousand three hundred square feet. So not too far off from what Jordan figured, just to give you an idea, and that's an eight hundred seat auditorium.
Okay, any other questions for Jordan? Thank you, Jordan, that was very informational. We have a lot to chew on.
All right, well, thank you and you all have a nice night, um, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, um, I'm always, you know, happy to be a resource.
Okay, that was an informational item, so we will um, discuss and take action on that at a future time. Uh, item number twenty-one is to approve our polling place, which is a resolution. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is something we do every December for the upcoming year's elections. Just a standard practice, uh, any or could we start with a motion, please? Okay, and all the details are of course in our bid package, any questions, comments? If not, this is a resolution, uh, so it will be roll call vote, Brian? Bruce? Angie? Dustin? Barb? And Joe? Myself, yes also, resolution passes. Okay, now we get to do the full revised budget discussion, Mrs. Pepper.
Thank you very much. Um, Jamie and I are gonna sort of tag team this, um, so hopefully. If I forget something, she'll jump in, I am just trying to get to where you can see everything. But it might not work real well, these numbers are really small, so we're gonna start here. I'm gonna go back and forth a lot, so I hope I don't, I hope I don't seasick, so, um. So this is revised budget um, for fiscal year twenty-five, which is a twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, you adopted a preliminary one last spring and obviously, you know, we did that and we don't, there's lots of things that change within timelines, so. This is doing with more information we have, um, I'm gonna start at the bottom here. I'm gonna work our way up because it's just a little bit easier, so, um. And as you all know, we've discussed this lots of times, there's different types of fund balances, and so we're gonna start with um, Fund Eighteen. And really the chart, if you remember, I would, I think I emailed out a couple of weeks ago, you got the whole spreadsheet. This spreadsheet goes all the way back to twenty twenty-twelve, twelve, thirteen years ago. Um, so hopefully you had a chance, maybe if you wanted to compare, well, what was like ten years ago on this? But one thing I do wanna point out is, um, back in twenty twenty-twelve, um, we have accounts we called reserved restricted accounts, that's. That's accounts that MDE tells us that you have to only can spend the money on certain things. Back in two thousand and twelve, we had approximately maybe ten of them. This year we have twenty-three approximately, so that tells you that. Um, yes, we've gotten some more funding, but a lot of that funding is tied to certain things or certain things you can only spend it on. So just wanna point that out, how that has increased to how that has doubled in thirteen years, so. And that's why you see a lot of NAs on here, because at one point it was and then it goes away and it's a constant change. So, okay, so starting at the bottom, our custodial scholarship. Um, fund which is Fund Eighteen is, that's pretty much what we, uh, Kruger Family Scholarship, that's gonna stay approximately the same. Um, our construction account right here, construction six. We used up all that money, that is no longer an account, it is closed, there's nothing in there, it is zero as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, but we always leave it on here for historical reference so that you can see as we go, as we, when we started the elementary. And um, CTE remodel edition, what, how the money was spent over the years, so we're there. Debt service, this is once again, we talked about just in the truth of taxation hearing, this is the money we spend for our. New elementary and the um, CTE remodel, um. Money for the, when the middle school, high school addition was made, that has now finally been paid off. So that's over and done, so all we have is our new elementary and CTE remodel, so. And once again, that number is set to be, to be about five hundred and sixty-one thousand, just slightly above where we ended at and on June thirtieth, so. Not a lot of major change there. Um, next area is what we call our Fund Four, which is our community ed, um, it consists of several different things. Um, it consists of actually community ed, our early childhood family education, school readiness is our Bridges preschool program. Um, adult basic ed is we are in a consortium with the Worthington and other other school districts. And restricted, which is our preschool screening and our imagination library, um, these bottom three are very consistent. Um, one thing to point out, every so often, we do have to cross fund preschool screening. That can vary based on the number of screenings we do, because the more screenings we do, the more funding we get, but we still always have to screen whoever we hit. Um, this budget is saying that we probably cross fund about five hundred dollars, that once again can vary, because I never know, they do screening in the fall. And I think Mr. Barknick, I think they also do it here several times throughout the year, so it can really vary. And um, and school readiness is our Bridges preschool program. Um, this budget requires us using twenty-five thousand from our compensatory funds. As well as up to approximately eight hun- eighty thousand of unassigned. And as we all know that we've expanding our preschool program and we knew we were doing that, we were gonna transfer money from unassigned to this one, so. And then I'm gonna have Jamie talk about our early childhood family education and our regular community ed.
So as you can see, the ECFE funds on the screen have increased um, a decent amount over time and so. Angie Guzman and I have been talking about what we can do to um, not charge families fees to participate in ECFE. And then also um, the special events that they have, they always have an event around different um, holidays. And so we're going to make both of those free and then also you may have noticed that ECFE just did a fundraiser. Like a McTeacher Night kind of a fundraiser, we're gonna stop doing fundraisers for ECFE because our fund is very um, healthy. And so those are some things we've been talking about, as well as doing some kind of a community event, maybe um, teaming up with the chamber again to do a. Kid band or, you know, those kinds of things, so ECFE is uh, doing well and so is community ed. And so Caitlin is aware that she is doing well with recruiting students to participate in community ed. And that fund as well has grown over time and so uh, we'll be talking about how we can. Sponsor different events for the community as a whole, um, and and use some of those funds to benefit the entire community.
So any questions so far before we continue to move up? Okay, our next fund balance is food service, which is right here, um, as you can tell, as we ended the year um, at three hundred and thirteen thousand. And I'm anticipating this to fall, um, main reason is we. When we hired our food service director, we actually made it a full-time position, the prior food service director, Elaine Deutschman, it was only approximately about ten months. Um, and then she worked sporadically during the summer, Mandy Boer, um, we just put her on a twelve-month contract with us doing summer meals. We really need the guidance and the help, um, and making sure those are, programs are running correctly, so. Um, and we also are purchasing some new tables for the Eagles Nest Lobby, um, we are finding out and Mr. Joyce couldn't. To verify this is that we are having students eat down there, because we're running out of room in our high school commons. So we have purchased um, some new tables for down in that area. And those should be coming not till probably January or February, it just takes a long time for things like that to come, so. And we always have to make sure that, you know, this fund balance does have a limit to the net cash resources, they they won't let you build it up so so far. Um, so it's prudent to spend it wisely on areas that will help and help our students with food service area. Um, so and please realize too that with the free paid, free meals that State of Minnesota implemented, um, this is the second year. That has really helped with that fund balance grow, because all students get free breakfast and lunch and we get reimbursed on all those meals. All right, um, the next thing is we're gonna talk about is all these restricted accounts. Um, so please bear with me, because once again, there's quite a few. And I'm gonna start and go from the bottom up. Um, these, the first two here are, all have to do with the REED Act and I'm actually gonna turn this over to Jamie, because she's been doing a ton of research on this. And this is not my area, so I'll let her go back.
I don't know about research, but uh, getting a ton of information on this, yes. So the first one that you see at the bottom of your screen, um, is a special fund that came in um, for teacher compensation. For completing one of the approved trainings. And so you might remember that you approved an MOU a few months ago and that is to use up these funds. So um, it is for time spent outside of the contract time. Um, so elementary is doing letters training, middle high school has a group doing OLA training and then there'll be another group uh, next year, so. Uh, these funds are gonna, I mean, it's not enough to um, to get everybody trained, but it's a good start, so that's what that first one is. The second one is literacy aid fund that can be used for curriculum. Um, so we purchased all of our UFLI manuals, which is the phonics and phonemic awareness curriculum that um, elementary has been using and loving. Um, so that's where that came from as well as um, any training we do, so. What we, what we typically do is if we have a professional development day, we code that entire day or the salaries for those people. Who participated in the training, we code that to the literacy aid or that REED Act fund and that's how we're using up those funds, so. Um, it's another bucket of money, but it can only be used for certain things related to the REED Act.
And these funds are one-time money, so once these funds are used up, they're used up, we're not gonna get anymore as of how the legislature is now. Okay, so I'm gonna go with line twenty-one here, um, Q Comp, Alternative Teacher Pay. Um, this has been around for quite a bit, um, just this year, though, they've made it a restricted account. And it used to fall up here under the assigned, and so when I look up here, you'll sort of see that these numbers really fell. That's because I had to pull the money of that account and move it down to a restricted account, for lack of a better word. So once again, um, this is money that um, our Q Comp Council has a Q Comp Plan, um, they use it to. They rehab goals, if they meet the goals, their stipends paid out to staff, um, any money left over is used for staff. Professional development for our staff and once again, it all follows a Q Comp Plan that is submitted to the state each year, so. Anything, I miss anything of that, so, all right, um, school library aid, um, this is new last year, so this is the second year. We get the forty thousand dollars, um, we spend it all approximately with our library, with the personnel to work in the library as well as the resources. The books and things we buy, we spend approximately eighty-four thousand, so does it cover all that? No, but it it helps, so that's great. Um, so we do spend all the, all the money every year on this, um, what doesn't get spent here comes from the unassigned bucket. Um, the next one right here is our English learner line, um, this used to be part of the basic skills or compensatory revenue. Last year was the first year it was pulled out, um, this is the money we we use to um, help our EL students. Um, we get about three hundred and fifty-four thousand on revenue, we spend district-wide approximately going to be about four hundred eleven thousand. So once again, it doesn't cover all the expenses, it definitely helps and any remaining amount does come from unassigned. Literacy incentive aid is something that we have received for several years, um, but they have changed the rules on it, what it can be spent. Um, it can only be spent um, on things. We are using this for letters and OLA training as well, so between this bucket money and the two below. Um, this monkey bucket of money is gonna be ongoing, so even though that we have that other REED Act money. This is the bucket that we'll continue to use as our new staff, as we get new staff and as we train them and use it for new curriculum, things like that, so. Any questions so far and all that? Okay, student activities, um, this is under control of the board, this is money raised by the students to be for the students. And once again, the band trips go on here, the social study trips, um, any other activities, sports or, you know, plays come in here. Um, one thing is they can never spend more than what they have, so it's pretty easy to go. It's pretty consistent, we stay approximately, just gonna fall slightly um, from last year. Um, scholarship is right here, and once again, this is other scholarships, this is mostly the Country Pride Scholarship that is awarded to Ag students every year. So that is growing just slightly from last year to this year. Payment and low taxes, um. I'm just gonna try to see if I can go over here a little bit, here we go, um, last year, we had approximately seven sixteen thousand nine eleven. We're gonna be approximately the same and that all gets spent. Um, this line here, we no longer have to do, so we're just, but it, once again, for historical purposes, it stays on the spreadsheet. Medical assistance, this is money that um, we get from the state when we have a. For lack of word, an encounter with some of the students that qualify for medical assistance, so it could be them working with the school nurse. Or PCA, um, maybe a speech teacher, what else am I missing? There's different areas, um, Amy Mirheus is the one that does it this far district, um, last year, we brought in approximately um, a hundred and. Twenty-four thousand, this year it's gonna be roughly the same, so anticipate that to be approximately the same. Long-term facility maintenance, you've all heard about this, um, this is money that we use to maintain our buildings. Um, one thing is it's restricted, is you can replace like for like, and I always like to use the example that if you have a door there. You, if that door fails, you can replace the door, but you can never put a window where the door was. So it's replacing like for like. Um, so this is going to fall slightly, um, but once again, we were using money approximately ninety thousand, we did a. Now I can never say this replay on our parking lots, so with the new parking lots. That we got with elementary school, we have to put a special solution on them to help maintain them, that was about approximately ninety thousand, it was done this fall. And as well as, this is the mon- money we use to do the new, the Eagle Lobby carpet. That was approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so once again, it's money um, we're using to maintain our facilities. So we save up and then we do a project and it falls a little bit and then we build it up, do a project, so. Any questions on that? Achievement integration, that is money we use for intervention program and I'm gonna have Jamie talk about that, because she works with Jackson and Mountain Lake on that.
So this is an application that we fill out to the state, it's uh, once every three years. And uh, Mountain Lake, Jackson and Wyndham go together on this, um, as you can see, it generates a nice um, pot of money for us. A hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, um, to be able to spend on our intervention teachers and we also use it um, for some summer programming as well.
All right, then we're gonna bump up here to operating capital, um, this account is, we get approximately two hundred and nine, right under three hundred thousand revenue every year. Every year, um, looks like we're gonna approximately stay the same. Um, this money is less restrictive than LTFM a lot of times, we do use it on our buildings, but we can also use it for curriculum. So as we knew, as we looking at new curriculum, like this year, we purchased new science curriculum, would come out of here. Um, as as they do new curriculum for, and I can't remember what's on the timeline for the future, but whatever that timeline is, this is where it can come from, so. Safe Schools Levy, this is line right here, we get approximately um, forty-eight thousand dollars, we use this to make sure that our school's safe. We use it for um, cameras, um. What else I'm trying to think about, security systems, we used it to do all the um.
The key fobs for the doors, so that the offices are secure, um, we've used it for vestibules before. Um, so anything that has to do with safety and security.
And we also, um, this school resource office stipend also comes out of this bucket of money. So, um, once again, and we know we have some cameras, we're going to be updating here soon, um, so that will be all coming out of here. We can also use, um, we also use these funds to pay for a partial of our, like some of our school, Skikes, school counselors, things like that, so. Um, gifted and talented, um, we roughly get about seventeen thousand, it's approximately, we got. Just slightly more than the prior year, um, we use this to s- to help pay for the teacher, the math teacher. That teaches in the middle school program, eighth grade students at the high school curriculum level, so um, that's where those funds are used. that teaches in the middle school program, eighth grade students at the high school curriculum level, so um, that's where those funds are used. Our gifted and talented program that we actually had at the elementary school, that grant has ended as of September thirtieth. This is not that, that is something totally separate and if you remember last year, the board approved to continue the gifted and talented program at our elementary school and that is now just paid out of the unassigned fund balance. So this is something totally different, so. Basic skills or compensatory, um, this money is approximately a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars more than last year. And I'm just going to come over here quickly, um, so it's really grown over the years. So back in fiscal twenty-three, we're at eight hundred and seventy-one. Last year, we are at one point one million and this year, we're expected to go get approximately one point three million. That is great for us. We use this money to do our EL program, lower instructor to learning ratios, after-school or summer school programming, counseling, guidance, social work services and school readiness programs. This is great news for us, but realize once again, um, the rules are going to change. We've had a hold harmless in place for the last couple of years and with now with free meals for all students, they've revised how they're going to do this and this number is going to fall for next year. We think it's going to fall approximately not more than two hundred, two hundred thousand? Because it's always based on your enrollment count of free and reduced students as of October first, so. But when, yeah, and it's and it's just now direct certified, it used to be even the parents that would fill out the paper applications wo- would count. But because we don't get a lot of paper applications anymore because parents tend not to fill them out because their student already gets free meals, um, they they revised how they fund this program and that's why we were held harmless for two years, but now it's going to fall slightly. What did I miss?
Um, MREA used MDE's new formula and did some runs with it. And we are not in terrible shape, some other districts are going to be seeing a much larger decrease in basic skills than what we are. So our compensatory is going to be okay. It's estimated at about a couple hundred thousand dollars less for us going forward, but we'll plan on that.
All right, learning and development funding, um, this is right here, we're roughly going to get about the same amount of money, um, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars less than last year. We also use this for reducing our our learning instructor to learning ratio. And our last step, our reserved account is our staff development account. Once again, we are getting approximately, and I'm just going to pull it over here, uh, maybe about seven thousand dollars more than last year. Our fund balance is is going to stay approximately, just slightly higher, not much, but um, this is money that uh, the Q Comp Council uses for staff development as well as Jamie and can dictate. And this is used by all different, not just teachers, but it can be used for pairs, it can be used for other staff to attend any type of trainings to make sure, you know, we stay abreast of what's going on and are qualified for our jobs.
Also remember that the REED Act has some mandates like uh, training, for example. So all of our teachers have to be trained in one of the um, programs that are approved, but that funding is not going to last. And so we use our staff development funds as a fallback um, to pay our teachers to continue with the training. So it's nice that we have that and it's nice that we have the uh, Q Comp funding as well so that we can accommodate the mandates that are unfunded.
Any questions as we leave this restricted group? Okay, and we're going to go to the next group, which is called assigned group. So this group is funds that um, I I've set up accounts to be carried over into the next school year. So it's, so it's, you think about it, it's another bucket of money that was there, if you don't get spent, it gets carried over into the next year. When you look at the unassigned one, that doesn't happen because it's just one big bucket. But these, you know, are things like the concession account, the weight room account, the backpack program account. So all the money that's ever been donated just stays in there until it gets used to buy the groceries to send home with the kids. It holds as our student in need account. Last year it used to, you can take a look at the numbers quickly right here that, you know, we were like um, nine hundred and sixty thousand in revenues and four hundred and twenty-five thousand expenses and now you're like going, why is it only thirty-two and a hundred and twelve? Because once again, if I, as you remember, um, Q Comp used to be in there and now it's under restricted, so it came down here. That was the majority of those funds, to be honest. Now I just had to pull them out there and move them down for lack of a better explanation. One thing we did set up um, this this year is we did set up um, a facility improvement account in a assigned. Um, we put in five hundred thousand dollars into an assigned account to help with our facility improvements. We know that we have roofs, parking lots, we have needs in our buildings and we're trying to save money just like you do on a personal level, um, to save money to help with those. And the good thing about this is um, it's flexible enough and w- we have five hundred thousand dollars in there, if it doesn't get spent, that's fine, it can stay there. If we can put more money to that account to help for future roofs or things like that, that's great. But um, we we did that to help plan for some of the things that we know, we know we have HVAC. The the needs are there, so, um, so that's what we did. Um, and as Jamie said too, um, we moved it into this assigned account. If for some reason in the future, um, it doesn't get used and you want to move it back into the unassigned, the board can do that. I mean, that's a good thing about it, it's just, once again, it's one way for us to save for future needs to make sure our buildings stay in good condition, so. Um, and I'm almost done. Spendable, um, that's an account, um, it it changes every year and it's only, it's only based on things that when we pre-buy things in June that are used for the next school year, it has to go into this non-spendable account, it's going to change. And it's always not figured out until the end of the audit, so. So I always use last year's number until I know what the new number is. And then unassigned is the big bucket of money. Um, one thing I do want to point out is that um, last year our unassigned revenue is fifteen point two million. Um, it's set to grow approximately five hundred thousand. Our expenses last year was fourteen point three million. We are showing that to grow approximately fifteen point six, so even though revenue has increased, so has expenses. But that also shows that, you know, we are slightly going to show approximately a slight increase in that uh, fund balance. Once again, the ma- ma- main reason for that is because right here, our ADMs, we've already talked about this, eleven ninety-nine, twenty-six point five DPK funding. That means more revenue, so we already talked about how that's going to change for last, for next year. But for this year, we're still going to do quite well for that. Um, the other thing we always want to look at is our minimum fund balance po- fund balance percentage. As you all know, I put this in the spreadsheet, we have a minimum fund balance policy that says if this falls, gets less than twelve percent, um, the board will enact certain cost sa- cost-saving measures. You're at thirty percent, so you're well above that. It is set to fall slightly from last year, but it's ve- very minimal fall. And one main reason too on this unassigned, that is growing a little bit, we talked about other things, but um, the special ed funding, we're showing an increase of approximately two hundred thousand from last year to this year. Once again, it's mainly because of that special ed cross, cross, special ed cross subsidy, can never say that. Continues to give us more money, now once again, it doesn't cover a hundred percent of our special ed costs, but it helps. So, all in all, I foresee this year we to be doing fine. We're going to fall slightly when you look at your district-wide fund balance from eight point nine to eight point seven. Once again, the majority of that is because of the facility improvements we've been doing, we expect to do that, we've been saving for that and we want to make sure we maintain all of our facilities to the best of our ability. Sorry that it's so long-winded and not real exciting, are there any questions?
Yes, so our minimum fund balance is our final revised balance of our general fund? Total general fund divided by our total general fund expenditures or is it our total district-wide expenses numbers?
So over here, it tells you exactly what it is, it's excluding those accounts associated within the restricted category. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show show you the formula that's used to calculate this, that's the easiest way, so if you look at the screen, um, I'm just going to try to make this slightly bigger. Um, what it is, it's taking um, this right here, um, line nine, ten and twelve right here, so these three figures here and it's dividing it by this figure and this figure. That gives you that thirty point five five. And that's used consistently across this whole, if you go back to all the other years, it is exactly the same formula. So you're using the exact same numbers.
Okay, so.
And the reason why it's it's falling is because your expense, expenditures are increasing.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, so it doesn't include the money that's locked into reserved funds? So it is truly funds that we can access at any point for anything, really. Okay, second question, in the reserved fundings, um, why can some accounts have a carryover? Like a fund balance and other accounts can't, is it just because we spend it all or is there restrictions like that or?
Most of the time, it's because we spend it all. Um, let's use, let's go down here to the English learner one. We talked about, you know, we are getting three hundred and fifty-four thousand, but we spend approximately four hundred and eleven. I use it all up. If for some reason we'd get more money than what we spend, then there'd be a fund balance to carry over. Um, same thing down here, let's just use the school library, we we only get forty thousand, that's great, we appreciate that money. But our expenses are over eighty thousand, if for some reason, you know, would get more than forty thousand, um, then would carry it over in future years, so.
Last question, thank you. Food services, it's kind of a use it or you loo- use it or lose it kind of thing? Like ECFE, I don't think has that, are there any of the other categories that we have to be careful not to let the fund balance get too high in reserved accounts?
Um, no, usually it's just the food service and food service isn't use it or lose it. What they will do, there's a set parameters that if you start meeting where you're getting too high, they may, they take a look and say, what can you do to spend that money down? And you have to come up with a plan and it can be to maybe um, buy new equipment, it can be made to maybe offer um, better food choices and spend more money, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, but like, I'm just picking ECFE because it's an example one where, but we could wait ten, twenty years and then use that money for that program in a really big way, we don't, okay, cool, thank you. That was the grand data, that was the year-end budget review, thank you for the high level of detail. Any questions for Mrs. Pepper, any more questions?
I would like to thank you Peggy for the details that you give, you keep the board very informed and we truly appreciate that. The interest is there, it's just for you to give the details so we understand and the public understands our budget. We're an open book, basically.
Okay, this is an actionable item, um, so do we have a motion? Thank you, any final questions or observations? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. Okay, and the next one is maybe a celebration and the like sad thing all at once, but um, the, it's titled Business Manager Retirement Intentions and it's informational, Mrs. Frank. You want her to do the talking, okay, Mrs. Pepper.
I'm notifying the board that my intent is to retire sometime in twenty twenty-five. I'm not going to give you the exact date because my hope is that I'll work with Jamie and the board to make a transition plan that we can bring someone new on, that you will give me time to work with that person, whoever he or she is, help them get used to the role. You know, things like that. It's hard to know, I don't want to give you the exact date because I don't know, if you find someone with experience, it could be a lot sooner. If there's some more work, you know, it could be, but my last date would not be later than December 30th, twenty twenty-five. Could be sooner based on the whole transition plan, but that's it. I appreciate everything this district has done for me, I've worked with a lot of amazing people. And that's why it's so hard, is because when you love what you do and you love the people you work with, you know? But um, my husband's retiring at the end of this month, um, my parents are aging and I just feel I need to be be there to support them and hopefully my kids, you know, help me around too, but that's, who knows about that, but. So, that's it, um, I appreciate the board, um, always supporting me, I do really feel that you guys have. Um, I hope I've been open and honest and clear about what I do, you know, that I feel that you can come to me with questions and I answer to the best of my ability. A, I do not know everything and I also know that, you know, this is a big district and there's amazing people that do it. And that's also made it a lot easier too to do this as well is because I'm only one person. I mean, you know, we got a great team in our school district and I'm only one. And so, you know, you'll be fine.
Well, thank you. So we'll save maybe all the gushy remarks for eight months or nine months or ten months from now when you're.
I don't need gushy remarks, I, I, if you don't have any now, I I thrive, I'm working behind the scenes, I don't like to be out in public, so that's why it's so hard. Because I, my my job is to support Jamie, the board, the the administration, everybody else and I don't like to shine, for lack of a better word, so. And I also feel we're, I'm leaving the school district in a great financial space so that you can do things for what is best interest of the students of our school district, and so.
Yeah, and you've done a good job, I think, um, appropriately informing at the levels to make sure first admin team was ready and you mentioned it to the board chair. So I think you've just, true to form, you've just kind of marched through this in a very uh, healthy way for what's best for the district and um, that brings us then to item number twenty-four, which is exactly what you alluded to. Is because you're announcing it with such a good timeline that we can have a really good plan in place, so, Mrs. Frank.
I will not go into gushy remarks right now, but I'm very happy for you Peggy. All right, so I put together a transition plan that should help us um, weather this very well. So I'm just going to uh, read through it so that we can all be on the same page. So below is a proposal to ensure a seamless and efficient transition of business management responsibilities during the transition period. The intent is to provide an extended training period in an effort to minimize disruptions to ongoing operations. So of course, there are some goals um, which you would fully expect. So the goals for this transition period will be to maintain operational continuity during the transition period, preserve institutional knowledge and avoid knowledge loss, build trust and clarity among team members and stakeholders and efficiently onboard the incoming business manager to assume full responsibilities. So there are some phases to this transition plan. The hiring phase um, would start soon, okay? I'd like to get this position posted because over Christmas break, people have time, time, right? We don't usually have time, but over the holiday season, um, we're able to, you know, look around. So I'd like to get it posted soon, um, so December eighteenth is my goal, um, if you approve my plan. We'll have it posted and through January, so it'll be posted for a month and a half. We are going to post it on regional and statewide sites. I'll use the first two weeks in February to review the applications, interview the candidates, select the finalists, finalists and hire. And the goal would be on March first, um, to have the new business manager begin within the district. So there'll be a transition period um, of role overlap and shadowing. So the incoming b- business manager would first work alongside the HR department. So I'd like the business manager to work with Jana and Holly to learn the HR side of things first. Peggy has said that her background knowledge in HR has really helped her as a business manager. So we both um, discussed the value of having the incoming person spend some time in the HR department first. So I estimate um, that if the new business manager spent about a month with Jana and Holly, that should give them a nice background as far as how payroll works, how the time clock works, how we code things. Um, all of those things that spill into the business manager's role. From there, the incoming business manager will shift into the business office and Peggy and the new business manager would share that office. This will continue for several months, but not to extend through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. The t- ke- key tasks would include uh, learning school finance. Now, as you know, school finance is deep and wide and if we hire somebody without that background, it's going to take a long time to learn school finance. You know, as far as what different pots of money can be used for and how we can um, maximize every fund that we get. And um, so that would be the primary um, task. Also, learning the use, UFR codes, um, how to make it all work with MDE, uh, learning the systems and processes and then of course, building relationships with all the stakeholders, including um, the board especially. We'd have a gradual um, handover of responsibilities. So that would be given to the incoming business manager and as the transition takes place, the outgoing business manager would decrease her time. She'd like to, you know, start working two to three days in the office instead of five days. And so as we. And so as we continue on through the transition, Peggy's time in the office would be lessened and she would be using some vacation time to make herself whole there. The exact dates will be determined as we go through the transition. It's really going to depend on who we find and how much support they need. During the post-transition phase, again, we'll be monitoring and supporting. But Peggy has also said that even after December thirty-first rolls around next year, she's willing to be a consultant for us. And so we can move her to a consulting contract like we do for Rick Ellingworth, for example, where he's just available, right? And so if I have a question, I just call him. Same could work for Peggy. If the new business manager had a question, we just call Peggy. So we would put her on a consultation contract at that time. So it might seem like we only have a year left with Peggy, but honestly, we could maybe have three years left or four years left or however much. Okay, so I am seeking the board's approval tonight because of course, there is a financial impact to a transition such as this. I'm estimating that for fiscal year twenty-five, which would be marched through June, salary and benefits could be up to fifty thousand dollars. Again, that's an estimate and that's on the high end because we always estimate high when we're looking at expenditures. And then for fiscal year twenty-six, which would be July through December, it could be as much as eighty-five thousand for benefits and salary for the new person. So because we'd have two business managers at one time. Okay, and that includes benefits, which is why it's not quite adding up for you right now. So salary plus benefits. Okay, what questions do you have and what can we talk about here?
I guess I appreciate the fact that we have a year to get this plan put into, into the works to allow a smoother transition to the next person coming in. I don't think she'd have, the person who will be hired won't have a better teacher than Peggy. I mean, we've, I said fifteen years and, is it in the district or in this role? In this, I was going to say, because I was on that hiring committee. Yep. So I appreciate it. I do feel like this is, to myself, it just seems logical and a good use for a smooth transition.
Peggy, this is on the lighter side of things. When I retired, my kids all moved away, my friends said to me, be nice to your kids because they decide on your nursing home.
I like the transition plan too because it isn't locked into by this date, we're going to do this, other than the December one. That's the only date that's really locked in. Even if it takes a little longer for applications, it might do that. But we're not locked into anything that, until December.
We'll get a formal resignation once the person is hired and we know what we're dealing with. And then you'll get a formal resignation letter with whatever that date that is going to be, once Jamie and the board has seen that as well.
And the timing's good. I mean, with some of our contracts, we have the early resignation incentives so that we can get ahead of the hiring season, so that's appreciated. And also whoever's stepping in can step into a learning environment because they're stepping into a well-laid-out, thirty percent fund balance budget with everything. So it's like, it's an okay time to learn instead of, oh, we kind of got a mess. Whoever comes in, they got to get their feet under them quick because we've got some things we've got to get taken care of quick. So, good job. And I like the plan too, well-laid-out plan.
And when I became his manager, we did this with Jane Bretzman, for those of you that know Jane, you know? And it worked well. I mean, she was a mentor for several years, you know? Yep, so. And I didn't feel like I was coming into a lot of, you know, things I didn't know. So that's what I want to pass on to whoever, the new person as well. So she was a great mentor.
Peggy, we were around, Barbara and I, because we know that worked well. Because we had, that's what we got, so.
Okay, well, this is a action. So do we have a motion? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this action plan, please say aye. Opposed, same? Motion passes. Okay, and that is our final thing. Meeting adjourned.